We're here.
We're all here.
I have the call.
You're in.
Yep, we can all hear you.
The notice department provided for the open public's meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice had been transmitted to the Courier News and the Star Ledger on Wednesday, August 21st, 2013, as well as posted on official bulletin board in the city clerk's office. Madam Deputy Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Yes, Councilwoman Brier.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Matt.
Here.
Storch.
Here.
Williams here. Chairman Reed, accident at Burkhole. Council President Rivers.
Here.
We have a form.
And Deputy Clerk, can you call the orders of the meeting?
The suing suit article, section 222-10A of the Ministry of Culture of the City of Plainfield, 1971, a special meeting is hereby called by the Plainfield City Council at 7:00 PM on Monday, August 26th, 2013, in the City Hall Library, 515 Washoe Avenue, City of Plainfield, for the purpose of considering active court follow-up. Resolution authorizing the submission of a layoff plan to the State of New Jersey Civil Service Commission, and a resolution granting the use of a city-owned parking lot, number 8 slash 8A, to Mr. Edison Garcia to conduct the fifth annual outdoor fiesta day celebrating the independence of Central America. The formal action may be taken by Board of the Plainfield Municipal Council.
Thank you. But we have public comments. Public comments limited to resolutions. Please be advised that the total time of 30 minutes will be out allotted to permit members of the public to comment on resolutions ordinance considered this evening. Each speaker will be permitted to -- will be permitted a maximum time limit of three minutes to comment. The floor is now over. The floor is open? Okay, again, we have no public comments? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. About the resolutions. I was just surprised nobody got up. I'll see you at 13:38, Martina Avenue. I just have a few points to make in terms of the -- I'm speaking regarding the festivals that are -- that gentlemen are seeking permission for the festival. My first comment is that certainly, certainly don't begrudge anybody making money, making a profit. And however, there's a few things I want to comment on. One of them is that I understand that fees were waived for two out of the three days for this last festival. That's my understanding, I'm not sure if that's correct. If that's correct, then I'm curious to know as to why they were waived, and why it would be enforced as to, you know, the operator paying those fees. Two, at one of the previous council meetings, it was the other operator got up and basically went through his book of revenues and profit and so on and so forth, and just as a matter of comment, nobody works for free. Nobody puts on a three-day festival to profit, you know, $2,000, $3,000, $5,000. These are cash-based businesses. They make a lot of money. They do bring a lot of people, but it's all cash, so...
Hold on, let's get this up.
Adrian, are you there?
I just dropped off my cellphone and I'm using a line liner.
Okay.
So the operator's making a lot of money, perhaps the vendors are making a lot of money, but the city is not making its fair share of what it needs, and the city comprises of the residents, the city government and the residents. The other question I had, and I don't know who will be able to answer this, but as far as a license is concerned and the property licenses, I operated a bar in New York City, and to operate even outside on my -- on the sidewalk, you would need an additional license or a variance or a special permit. And I'm curious to know if all the vendors and/or the operators have the proper licenses in place, and that the vendors do as well. And then, I think it sets up a very bad precedent in terms of the ongoing festivals other than the noise control, crowd control, I think there's really a lack of organization, the cleanup process, so on and so forth, that it sets a bad precedent in the sense that if anybody can come to the city and set up shop on one of the municipal lots for a fee, or maybe not a fee, considering, you know, depending on who you are, then, you know, where's my lot where I can set up shop and open up the business for the weekend and make some quick cash? And I think it really sets a bad precedent.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is David Biagini. I am the manager of the Plainfield Special Improvement District. Our office is at 105 East 7th Street, Plainfield. Plainfield Special Improvement District Board of Directors discussed Resolution 327-13 at its August 22nd board meeting after being presented with a petition in opposition to the outdoor fiesta signed by approximately 30 of our businesses. Questions were raised by the board as to whether the event would be more appropriate in a larger venue and farther away from the business properties, whether the noise ordinance was being enforced, whether the event could be shortened, whether outside vendors were solicited at the expense of local merchants, whether alcohol was appropriate with children present, et cetera. Since tonight's resolution calls for yes or no vote without the answers to these questions, Plainfield Special Improvement District Board of Directors resolved that it is not in favor of the outdoor fiesta application based on our constituents' complaints and requests that the application be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the sake of the folks that just came in, we're having public comments. Anybody is free to come to the microphone and speak on one of either of the resolutions that are on the agenda for tonight.
We do have public comments again at the end of the meeting. Seeing no one coming to the mic and have a motion to oppose public comments, so...
A second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion passed. Thank you. Mr. Reba. Mr. Machello. Can you answer some of the questions as far as the...
Sir, I'll do my best. Mr. Reba, you're in fact correct, there was a waiver by the council on a previous event, not this one, a previous event for two days out of the three-day event. As for the requisite permits, licenses that are required to have the event, all that the council is voting on tonight is the use of the city-owned lot. The administration through the clerk's office monitors all the proper permits that will be necessary for the event, whether it be food license, alcohol service of alcohol, all those things will be monitored through the clerk's office and the police department. So the council tonight's action is merely to grant the use of the city-owned lot, but that just doesn't say that all those other questions will be answered and reviewed, those will be reviewed by the administration, not in the council.
Thank you, Mr. Machello. Okay, it looks like we have the nominated chairman, because Councilman Reed is not here. Do you have a nomination to nominate a chairman for tonight?
I'm willing to nominate me.
I second that.
I'm willing to nominate Corey Storch.
Do I have to compete with Reverend Williams?
Okay, well, I'll second Corey. I second that.
Do you withdraw your nomination?
I withdraw my nomination.
All those in favor, aye. Any opposed, any extensions, motion passed. Okay, I'll turn it over to the chairman.
Okay, so we're... I'd like to introduce the Resolution R. 326-13, authorizing submission of a layoff plan to the State of New Jersey Civil Service Commission. And I need a second.
Second.
Before I go to roll call, Mr. Machello, I was on vacation out of the country last week when they had the meeting, and I understand that this layoff plan failed. Is there funds, is there money in the budget right now using the UEZ money to fund this? Can you tell me how this works and why is this illegal?
Well, basically, by the council's action at a prior meeting, the fund, the UEZ funds that were normally used to fund the Office of Economic Development were removed from the budget on a prior 159 resolution. After those funds were removed, the next action that needs to be taken is the submission of the layoff plan to the state. That's per Civil Service Regulations. If we do not submit the layoff plan to the state, we are not in compliance with the law, specifically Civil Service Regulations. Because there are no funds in the budget for these positions, we have no choice but to take this action. So at our last meeting, what the problem that fell to council is that we had an unfunded position, but we have a layoff plan that wasn't able to move forward. Tonight, the resolution to submit the layoff plan is back on, in hopes of getting us to comply with the Civil Service Regulations.
So actually, we really have no other choice, because there was individuals sitting in a position that is unfunded?
That's correct.
Can I have a roll call?
Good, before we do that, are there any other comments from council members? Okay, so, yeah, go ahead.
Because it was not explained, or I did not understand, that when we removed that 159, there was no way of having, that there would not be any funding. I did not realize that that meant that the money is coming out of that particular part of where it was coming from, there would not be any other money. And so, that's where, that's where I misunderstood. But I am still saying that we have funded that position out of that money for all of these years, right? Why couldn't it be continued, even if it was funded and this was made known that this is the last year it's going to be funded? And to cut off somebody without even knowing, I think is absolutely ridiculous when that position was funded from the UEZ money all around.
Are there any other comments? Do you have a microphone? I just want to reiterate to my colleagues that the reason we took that action to not use UEZ funds is that we have one pot of money, once we spend it, it's going to go away, we're never going to see it again, it's a one-time deal. We have a list of potential UEZ projects that far exceeds the money we have available, so every time we spend a dollar, that means that it's one dollar less for the list that's already in place. And the list that's in place includes some very significant projects. So I think it's in our interest to conserve these funds to the greatest of our ability. And the projects that are on that list are job-creating projects, and I think it's short-sighted to think... I've just, let me finish. We're losing one job to hopefully create many jobs, that's the whole point of UEZ.
I lost another thousand dollars?
I'm not sure what you're... So anyway, that's my comment, and I think unless there's any other comments, we're ready for a bump.
Yeah, I need a comment. Based on what our attorney has indicated, it does not appear that we have any other options. You know, we are in noncompliance if we don't, so based on the counsel from our attorney, I think we don't have a choice, even though I always hate to see someone lose their job or be laid off, especially with the economy the way it is today.
Are any other comments before we proceed? Okay, so who's doing a roll call on this, or...
Councilwoman Brier?
Yes.
Reeves?
No.
Matt?
Here.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Rivers?
Yes.
Five in favor, one opposed, the resolution has been adopted.
Councilmembers introducing Resolution R. 327-13, granting the use of city-owned parking lot A and 8 and 8A to Mr. Edison Garcia, who conducted fifth annual outdoor festival days celebrating the independence of Central America. And we need a second for that.
Second, and I have a comment. And I just want to say, in looking at this, in looking at this resolution, there are conditions that the, that us, for honest, has not met, looking specifically at number two, approval from surrounding retail merchants. We heard Mr. Biagini speak to the retail merchants in the area who are opposed to this. We also received last week a petition that had about 15 or 16, it was 15, vendors who were opposed for a variety of reasons, mostly those reasons having to do with the conditions of the aftermath of the festival, but also during the festival, they were unable to conduct their business, and they actually lost money. We've also learned that many of the vendors who are, you know, utilized in this festival are out-of-town vendors who pay several hundred dollars, I heard seven, eight hundred dollars or so per vendor to participate. So it doesn't make any sense to me that we would inhibit the earning potential of people who live here, who own businesses here, and pay business taxes here, for them to lose 20, 30, 40 percent of their business to enrich one person who is charging other vendors to come here and make money. I think that it's kind of short-sighted of us to grant three whole days of a premium weekend for our local businesses who have been here for a long time to actually lose money. It's just, to me, it's just patently unfair. And I think that in addition, I think that if this festival was an alcohol-free festival, then I think that it would make maybe more sense, especially if we were to hold, if it were to be held somewhere else. In addition, Mr. Garcia just had a festival eight weeks ago, and I think that, you know, allowing a business owner to have festival after festival, you know, celebrating the independence of this country, of that country, et cetera, it ends up really harming our city. I am dead-set against this. And finally, I would say, this didn't receive, you know, enough votes, and I'm really upset that it's even back on a special meeting agenda when less than a week ago, it would, we'd already voted on it. So it seems that, you know, if Mr. Edison, as I've said to others, is the eighth counselor, and he has more of a say than I do, I just find that really problematic, and I think it sets a very bad precedent if a business owner can, you know, make a complaint, and if we have, you know, a resolution brought back that already failed one week later. In addition, we have a 45-day rule, which is also not being adhered to, as many people have pointed out and have actually emailed me about. If we're not going to follow our own rules, it kind of makes a mockery of what we're trying to do here in being responsible counselors when we pass legislation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to, on last week, I did vote against this resolution, having received information that was not accurate. So what I did was I walked the streets of this particular area, and I went to some of the residents that was on the petition, and some of them did not even exist, and some of them were competing businesses. I received good counsel from some of our colleagues, some that are not here, in reference to celebrating the independence of Central America, especially in a community, a diverse community like ours. It is not true that only one person benefits. It has been brought to my attention that local residents in this community also work this particular event, and they also are able to pick up income for their families.
Are there other comments?
Yes, as I stated, as I stated...
Hold on a second, we have...
As I stated previously, I was out of the country when this, at the last, when the last meeting took place. When I got back, I had received a text from a council member that they wanted to change their views on what happened. And I also received a copy of the petition, and I too walked that area, and some of the people that were on that petition, as Councilwoman Brier stated, did not exist. And some of the people that were on that petition said they didn't know what they were signing, they just signed it. And again, I did also speak to some of the residents who benefited from this, who also stated that they do work this event also. Now, we granted the other petitioner a second festival, as well as this petitioner, but what I would suggest to council members is that we go back and revisit how we allow these organizations to have these festivals for next year. So this is why this item was brought back to the agenda. I didn't know if the vote could just immediately go back to the council, and can she change it? I didn't know what could be done, so that's why, if a council member is asking something of me, that's why I add it to the agenda.
Can you explain that?
Explain what's up.
Just about things that have already been voted down, just being brought back, because someone asks it. I can read back anything that's been voted on in the past.
As long as the procedure's recalling of a special meeting, but absolutely, any item can be brought back at a next, at a following meeting, absolutely.
I hope everybody realizes the kind of precedent that that sets. I think it's a dangerous precedent.
May I jump in here, please? Okay, it's your turn.
I will have a lighter moment offline with my colleague from the second and third, but let me just say this. My views on this are at odds with some in the room, I am sure. But I'm not looking for a reason not to have a festival or festivals in our city. I'm very interested in finding ways to promote Plainfield a destination for arts and culture. And yes, there are some things that we need to look at differently and that we need to revisit, but I don't think what I have heard so far, especially the opposition from competing businesses, I don't think those are good reasons for us not to grant provisions. I'm aware of some of the problems competing businesses have with the festival before us for consideration this evening, but competition is the nature of business. As we look to next year, we must think of ways to preserve the life of the baby. We do not have to throw out the water, we don't have to throw the baby in the bathroom. So I want us to do that. As we look at these festivals next year, I've already mentioned that we need to make sure that there is a calendar spelled out way in advance of the dates of these festivals, and that we will adhere to any ordinance that we have in place. We have made some mistakes, but I would like to encourage my colleagues to just look at this from the point of view of a way for us to promote arts and culture in our city, for us to bring people to the City of Plainfield, and this is not about whether or not one business is succeeding over another business, it's all about competition. But at the end of the day, we want the businesses in the city to flourish and to be successful and to make money, and that includes every business. And so, I want to say that we may not have the support in this. I believe that it is good for our city. I would like to have a conversation with our Director of Public Works to find out if there's any credible evidence or support for some of the statements that were placed on record at the last meeting about public urination, about the lot being shroomed to filth and garbage, and so I would like to ask the Director to present a report to the governing body concerning his knowledge about the aftermath of the last festival held by Mr. Garcia. But for now, I would say we should support it, and we should give it our blessing in spite of some of the negative feedback that we've gotten.
Can I have a comment? I just want to reiterate the testimony, or actually the statement from Mr. Biagini, you know, about the businesses that he mentioned, and also that according to this resolution, and I have not seen approval from the surrounding retail merchants. I would also add that competition, of course, we all encourage competition, but this isn't competition when one person is having an event that may be hindering other businesses from operating. There are not 30 festivals competing in that same lot, that's competition, and I don't think that this meets that, and I would just ask Corporation Counsel about this item number two on the resolution, approval from surrounding retail merchants. What does that mean?
I certainly, I leave that up, I guess, to every council member to make a decision whether or not they feel that they have the requisite rules.
I've gotten no approval from any merchants, I've gotten no paperwork, whether, you know, the petition last week may have had some additional people, whatever, you know, I think that Mr. Biagini, representing the Special Improvement District business owners, you know, I think that, you know, they had a meeting, and I'm sure that they're real businesses, but I would say that, you know, because of no evidence that we've received approval from the surrounding retail merchants, then this has not met the criteria for passage.
If I may comment, I attended the Special Improvement District meeting Tuesday or Wednesday night?
Thursday.
Thursday night. And there were, I believe I counted, eight merchants at the meeting present, and it was extensive discussion about this resolution, and we heard the results, it was unanimous, I think eight, nothing vote to recommend the council not approve this. But what I did for that night, I took some notes, and I just want to read into the record the five points that I wrote down, which I believe kind of is the rationale for the CIT board to recommend not approval. So I'm just going to read them. Merchants with stores near parking lot eight, where Mr. Garcia has held previous festivals, estimated they lose 20 to 40 percent of usual sales during festival days. Merchants who purchase tables for the festivals pay $800 per day, and the CIT board members believe that all of them are from out of town. They believe that not one downtown Plainfield merchant has participated in these festivals. The CIT board described the loud music and alcoholic beverage consumption as disruptive and discouraging of customer activity in downtown. Public urination presumably related to drinking activity has not made for a family-friendly shopping environment, and according to CIT board members, the smell lingers well after the festivals are done. And last, the stores near the soundstage experience music so loud that some stores literally vibrate from the music throughout the day and night. So those are the reasons why the CIT board voted as it did, and for those reasons, I'm not going to support this. I do believe that we have to look at our policy, our ordinance, and look how we're enforcing our ordinance, because right now, we're not... Because right now, we're not, you know, we're not respecting the forty-five day rule that we have in our ordinance. But I think whatever we decide tonight, I think we have to, as, as Council President has said, we have to look at this carefully for next year. I wouldn't be surprised if we get more, more applications this year. We have to look at it in the near future so that we make whatever changes are necessary to make these events beneficial to everybody, not just to the sponsors. But seeing as, I do believe that there's going to be enough support to pass this, I'm going to offer a couple of amendments to this resolution. The first amendment is that we approve this without the sale of alcoholic beverages. Do I have a second?
A second. Roll call.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Breeze?
No.
Matt?
No.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Rivers?
No.
All right, I'm going to try another one, maybe I'll have more success. I, I, I make a motion that the, the hours of the festival are limited to a closing time of ten o'clock with music to be stopped at eight P.M.
Second.
What, question? What, what time maybe we usually stop?
Ten o'clock.
I thought you said one.
Oh, eleven.
Oh, ele- oh, eleven?
That's crazy.
Eleven.
Well, it's a three-day festival, it's, it's whatever day it is. So, so I'm recommending, so I'm, I'm moving for ten o'clock with an eight o'clock hence of the amplified music.
A second.
When you say amplified, you mean music cannot amplify?
Yeah, I mean, whatever, using the soundstage, which is projected out into, yeah, to town and all of downtown.
I'm the chairman.
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to offer an amendment to your amendment.
Okay.
That is that music be, be cut off at ten P.M.
Okay, I was, I was recommending eight, he's recommending ten. We're, we're getting like a, like a middle ground here, you're hearing nine o'clock? We have, we have a lot of suggestions. We need, I think we need a parliamentarian at this point because we have three amendments to the amendment.
I would recommend that, so, if there's a second on a motion, then that has to be, we have to vote on that. If that fails, we can go to another potential time.
I'm going, I'm going, I'm going to modify my, my-
You can withdraw your amendment.
I'm going to withdraw my amendment, I'm still going to say shut the festival at ten, but I'm going to say that the music ends at nine o'clock.
Second.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Breeze?
No.
Matt?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Rivers?
No.
Born famous to oppose.
It's a compromise. There is another amendment that I would like to offer, and I think it's more the result of there being mistakes in the resolution. And that is in the first paragraph, at least the copy that I have. It states that the, the date of Friday, September sixth, thousand thirteen, Saturday, September sixth, I believe that should be Saturday, September seventh, and Sunday, September seventh, which I believe should be September the eighth. And then further down, in item number five, it says, save homeless. I suspect that it to be whole homeless.
Whole homeless.
Whole homeless, yes.
Those are the amendments that I would like to propose. I don't know if they're amendments, they're just corrections and errors.
How do you want to handle it?
I would do it as amendment, but it's not-
We have a second to that?
No, just let me, it's just a title from my watch list.
All right, so it's just a correction. We don't need an amendment. Are there any other comments or amendments?
I would just like to reiterate that one of the conditions of this is approval from surrounding retail merchants. And I have not heard any other merchants provide testimony. I have not seen anything in favor of this. And I would also say that again, we are violating our own laws here because we had put in a forty-five day condition, I mean, forty-five days before to have this presented to us. If we're not going to follow our own rules, then there's no reason for us to ever even make any rules.
Okay, so we're ready for the vote on the amended resolution, let's just clarify.
Actually, I have one more question.
We will do that-
I have one more question.
After, yes, go ahead.
So, we have now said that the music must be shut off at nine P.M.
No, at ten.
No, 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 no.
The festival ends at-
The festival ends at nine P.M., the festival ends at ten.
That, that was the reason.
That's what we just voted on, yes, okay. Now, we voted for the festival to end at ten and the music to be shut off at nine P.M. That's what we just voted on. Right, that makes more sense if this is going to pass.
Did you have a question, or was that, that was it?
My question was, there's, so what you're saying is that there's a possibility that on Wednesday, we can receive a call for another special meeting to change this again.
No, let's not do that.
I'm saying theoretically, you're saying that can happen though.
With forty-eight hours notice, a special meeting can always be pulled.
Thank you.
So I think we are ready to call a question, and let's just state it so that it's very clear for everybody what we're voting on. This is to pass the, doesn't look as written with the, with the amendment that the events for each night closes at ten, that the music stop at nine, and, and that was it, that was the only-
That was it.
Yeah, and that the corrections that Councilman Matt stated would be included. That's, that's the motion. We have a second for that motion.
Second.
We need a roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Storch?
No.
I, I made those amendments because I believe, I do not believe this festival should take place, but if it has to take place, I believe it had to be modified to meet the needs of the community. So I'm voting no.
Out of order, according to the party, you're in the voting.
Right.
Except, oh, you're right. So, yeah, so-
Williams?
No.
Rivers?
Yes.
That's the fourth to-
Thank you.
I pass it back to the president.
Public comments during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Plainfield. A total of sixty minutes has been allocated to all public comments to be presented. If you wish to encourage, give your name and address to the speaker, I'm sorry, to the clerk for the burger. The amount of discussion on a single subject, as well as the amount of any single speaker is out, is allowed, will be limited to five minutes. Need my glasses. We have public comments. Public comments.
Denise Pacley, one twenty-four, seven streets. I can hear coming up, you can all the way down where I live on Park and Step. My neighbor lives a couple further blocks down the Watchon, she can hear. We do have on the books, or we had, an ordinance stating that music should, noise should not be heard, I think it's a hundred feet out. And so if, I think if people looked into the noise volume or decibel level of these things, that that would be a big help to the neighbors because I know sound carries. Where I live, depending where the noise is coming from, it bounces off the apartment buildings, and so you never can tell exactly where it's coming from. But if it's coming all the way from Front Street, seven blocks down to where I live, that is distracting me out in the yard to where I'm wondering what's going on. I think that's too much. And so that, that has not been brought up. The decibel level of these amplified music and speeches, to me as a resident, is a big factor in whether these things are something good for the community or a nuisance.
Thank you. Anyone for public comments?
Oh, you go ahead, sir. No, you go ahead.
My name is Harrison Garcia, one eleven East Front Street. I'm the person that are trying to hold this festival. And I've been doing for, this is the fifth year. Basically, I started the festival because in Plainfield, we have a large Spanish community, and, you know, and I was trying to see, but not just for the Spanish, just for everybody because I have African-American vendors, I have African-American bands, which is in the festival in July. And I feel like I've been mistreated for all these years that I've been doing because we have the, the competition that was here last week trying to prevent not me to have the event. When I applied back in May for the festival of July and September, they just took from the agenda the festival for September. They just, the council just approved me the festival for July. And then now that I'm trying to get the festival for September, and, excuse me, back on, back on July, the council asked me to close the festival at ten o'clock, the music, and the festival at eleven. So the competition had, you know, a couple weeks ago, and they were open to eleven o'clock with the music. So now, I've heard that there is an amendment that, that I need to close the music at nine and close the festival at ten. When everybody, you know, everybody comes out to the festivals at six o'clock, seven o'clock, when the sun set, eight o'clock at nine, but I have to close at nine o'clock? And, and, and you're right, you said about the beer. I, that's the only way that I can pay for the event. I don't have no sponsors. I'm the only person that I, you know, I'm putting up. You heard the comment of Mr. Marie last week. He was saying that he has spent sixty-five thousand dollars. And I believe him because I've been doing this, this type of thing. I, in the Spanish community, Plainfield has been known just for bad news. When somebody got killed, when somebody got beaten, then the Univision, Channel forty-one, the cams, Channel forty-seven, so Plainfield and Spanish community has a bad name. I've been trying to change that. I've been showing, you know, different people from Elisa, the Jersey City, Union City, that Plainfield is different, is not bad like what you're saying with the news. We, we have activists that every time that something bad happened, they call the, the news. But when I have over ten thousand people coming three days with no problem, with not even a single problem, so nobody comes. So, you know, basically, and, and on top of that, I'm bringing people from, you know, other towns to see, to buy a plane here. If you don't, if you don't sell one day, but you want to be selling the festival of the year because new people is coming, we have a beautiful downtown. You know, Elisa doesn't have it. I had a business in Elisa and the Union City, and they don't have that beautiful downtown that we have. And, but, you know, it seems like for a lot of business owners, which I was going to say that too, I have some business owners that didn't sign the petition without knowing that what they were signing. And I can give you exactly the name of the person, Casanova Pizzeria, he told me. They asked me to sign this to keep us a clean city, and I signed it. I didn't know that there was a biofestival. So, and then there was another owner that they told me, same thing. So basically, I feel mistreated. Why Mr. Marie can't have, you know, to eleven o'clock? Why his, why his event was approved on, on the month of May for two events when I submitted before he did, and they just approved just one event? So basically, that's what I, I would like to, the council know, you know, that I feel like everything that they've been saying, you know, it hasn't been true. There are, my festivals, like I said, I've been having two festivals, that's the ten festivals. And I haven't had a single problem. We've been, you know, the city is being, the police department, yeah, the, the police department, they've been- I'm sorry. And I want to thank you, the-
I request that you give him another one, I'm finished.
Second. All those in favor? In repose, vote any votes, most of the cast.
All right, thank you. The police department, we've been working since the day one with police department. We have officers working the three days from the festival. The fire department, we have two, two fire I N inspectors, twelve hours a day. That's a hundred twenty dollars per hour that we pay for each fire department. The health department, we pay fifty-five dollars for each permit. So if we have three days, that would be a hundred sixty-five dollars. And we, we gotta pay twenty-five hundred dollars for the city per day. So, you know, I believe that the, the festivals, even the officers at the police department, that they're not working, they're working in my place. If they don't, they don't have to go and, and sit home if they want to work, you know, they, they don't work. So everybody, you know, is, in, in some way or another way, you know, we have a, a winning deal. And on top of that, the community, it gets together, like you were saying. We were selling liquor, not, not in front of the kids, but, you know, you can see people walking with the stores or little kids running, you know. Those type of events, that's the type of event that we have in our countries. If I can give them one or two days of those type of events, I don't think so. But I'm asking, you know, most of these people, they're tax city papers. And I don't see why they, they, they cannot have it. So I want to thank you, the council, and I, and I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. And I would like to ask if you can please, not, not wait or just have the hours, the time hours changed. Because closing at nine, at nine o'clock, I'm going to be closing month.
Thank you.
I, I do want to respond, Mr. Garcia. I, I, I just want to say that I've supported every one of your events so far. I do believe these festivals have some value. But we, no, the city council has a lot of constituents. We, we can't serve one merchant over other merchants. And we've got a lot of residential constituents that for, for a number of years have been complaining about the noise of your festival. So I think it's entirely valid that the council put some conditions, put the conditions that we put tonight because we have, we have to, we have to serve all of our constituents. But I would like to ask you, can you, at, at, at other festivals that I've been to, when alcoholic beverages can serve, it's been served in a roped-off area. So somebody buys a beer, they have to stay in the designated area. They just, they can't wander through the whole festival when there's families around. And I don't believe that's the setup we have in, in this festival. I, I, I believe that people take their alcoholic beverages and they kind of walk all over the parking lot. I think that's probably illegal. So can you, can you promise us that, that, Mr. Garcia, I just want to ask you a question.
There's no back and forth though, so he, he-
I just want to ask if you will create a designated area for consumption of alcohol.
Yes, we do have it.
Mr. Garcia, there's no back and forth, you can address Mr. Storch after meeting.
And I, and I do expect that it will be enforced. I hope that our police will enforce it because we, we do not want people wandering over, around downtown with alcohol. I mean, New Orleans, it's great, I love being in New Orleans. But this is not New Orleans, this is Plainfield. It should be consumed in a designated area. And I do hope that you will honor our noise ordinance because it, it has created a disturbance that many people have complained about.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I think that Mr. Garcia has raised an issue, which I think that the governing body and the administration need to, need to take a look at.
Yes.
We just impose a condition in terms of when the music must end.
Right.
We have another festival that we gave permission to, that I believe will be occurring in September as well. Is that, is that the case?
Yes.
And so we need to take a look at that permission that was already granted. I like to be fair to everyone.
That's right.
And we can't have one law for the meetings and another one for the persons.
That's right, that's right. That's right, that's right.
So we need to take a look at that permission that was granted and impose the same conditions, so that we would have a level playing field.
May I add something as well? I think then that the city is also owed two days' worth of, a waiver. So we should also receive $5,000, because the other festival did not receive a waiver. So I think that we're also owed $5,000 for two days of a waiver festival.
I think that administration needs to take a look at what Councilman Matt has stated. We have to be fair across the board with this festival in coming, we have to be fair. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maritza Ortiz. I am owner of the Riza Boutique, I'm also a board director of the SIT. I've been in business for 25 years in the city of Plainfield. I don't know if somebody from the community know me. I actually represent the Hispanic community. I am a lot, I'm actually a advocate for our Hispanic community. In the words that I was hearing, businesses opposing today, we count the seven businesses right in the same block, and I can mention them. We have here the owner of La Sorpresa. We have here a beauty supplier on the same block, B&amp;B. And we have another businesses, we're also like that. And all of these are businesses that they're all here, and they're all opposing. It's not like businesses in, like the documents saying that all, no, no business, they didn't know what they signed. This is new businesses that didn't work at the, at the Monday meetings. I was not there, or some of these businesses, I was on vacation. Today, I actually had a surgery on my tooth, I was not going to come. But this woman came actually to my business and says, "Maritza, you're not supporting us." You know, where you was on Monday, how come, you know, so I'm actually, like I told the SIT, I'm, I'm telling them, "It's businesses coming to me as a board director of downtown Plainfield." And we're the mostly that is getting hurt. We're not against, or we're not, like, how do you call it, businesses, like maybe he's mentioning that I'm against him or nothing, we're not. I even told Mr. Stewart on the meeting, he can have his, as many as he wants, but somewhere by the park, or somewhere on North Avenue, let them, let them, the North Avenue, you know, let them bother, but not us. It's really bothering. And I have here a gentleman who actually, he mentioned, he went to our meeting. It's not actually myself or businesses against him, I'm actually friends with him. But it's not, it's not only him, like I'm a friend with him. I actually have to, just like you, see all the businesses, you know, they came to me. I was not going to come, I told Dave, I said, "Look Dave, today I had a surgery on my tooth, and I was not going to come." So I was going to speak actually today, but this woman came in here, and they're here. They're owners of La Sorpresa, right at the same block, who actually is really hurt. Myself is in the same block, so we are really getting hurt. So you really have to, as a business owners, have to listen. It's not like we're against him, it's just so many situations. I have cameras through the back. So, um, if I wanted me to bring video, I could really show you people peeing in my back part, peeing, throwing garbage, and, but you know, I was the type of person that I, I am so busy that I, at the same time, I don't really have time, but now businesses are coming to me. I was on vacation when they did all the signageing. I, I didn't sign because I was closed during that week, I was on vacation. So it looks like they went by front street and signed, so if they show me, I could have signed also. It's not like we're against this, that, and we don't have no competition. I don't make no, no carnivals, or all these women don't make any carnivals. It's just, it's really hurting our businesses. So, so that's why when I was hearing businesses assigned there, here, it's seven businesses that, and then, that's what I told them, "If you really wanted, you could be hurt, okay, come." So ask them, some of them have their own business cards, they hear, and it's seven businesses right in the same block. So if one business is like this, okay, fine, but it's seven, right in the same block, that they just cannot be accepting this thing. And like I told them, it's not like against him, he can do all his things that he want, but just do it in another place, somewhere like maybe the Cedar Brook Park. I even mentioned it to him, the Cedar Brook would be wonderful, it's huge, it's big. Let them drink, let them, but it's away from the city. You know, I've been to, I belong to, besides the board, I am a set, I am a Chambers, from Hispanic Chambers. And they do, they make, they make all these festivals, and they make them all big. But like, I have experience with all these things, because I'm a Chambers buyer, buyer, by the Hispanic. And they do them in, in parks, they do them huge, they expect 15,000 people, and they do them put in parks. You know, it's safe, and not, not in our area. They used to have them in Newark, right on Ferry Street, the Ecuadorian, they cut it down, they cut it down. Now they only maybe have like a parade, but the festivals, they cut it down like just for like a short part. But they just don't continue to have them, like, because I guess the businesses are complaining, because it was a Portuguese, the Portuguese festival, so they cut it down too. So, I mean, or at least one, even in Elizabeth, that we have a bigger town, they make only one. It's huge, right at the main street, but only one. And then they do make a bigger one, far by the pier. So if you've ever been to, so it's just Plainfield is just getting out of, out of control. It's not, we don't have nothing against him, you know, nothing, he is actually my friend, but it's not only him, I'm talking about this woman, she's actually, you know, I'm sorry, handicapped, owns a business, La Sorpresa, it's a B&amp;B, we have here...
One second, Maritza, I have a motion.
To motion to extend time?
Second.
So here we have businesses, and they all...
All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Anything, it's, again, it's not, it's, you know, but we have to tell our part, you know. Gentleman here, he said he lost 40% of his sales, and Mr. George was there hearing. So it's nothing that we have against him, I'm Nacho Chesmeri, I'm not a friend of Chesmeri, I don't know who they are, but you know what I'm saying? So if we're talking about our own thing, and we're business owners, I've been here for 25 years. Today, I really, actually, I was so upset, because today they came in through Front Street, okay, fine, controlling all the things that, because businesses are going out of business, you know? But they're controlling things that they're putting outside the door, but I'm saying, controlling, garbage, drinking, all this stuff, oh, they don't control that. So just because we're a little small as a business owners, they have to listen to us. And I, they told them, some of these people, I, I actually have a lot of Hispanics backing me up, a lot of Hispanic business backing me up, that they're just not compliant. I told the SIT to go out there and get signatures, you will get more than 40 signatures. So it's not only me. And like you're saying there, they're just going, they're just going to businesses, invented businesses, not, not in business, that's not right, they're here right now.
Thank you. Question? It's finished, oh, we can get all your questions in.
Yeah, Damon, 661 West 7th Street. I got up to speak only because I wanted to second Bernice's comment on the noise. During the Fourth of July weekend, the festival was going on. I was coming out of the Sears store on Route 22 in Watchum and could clearly hear the music from the festival downtown Plainfield. So I think that whoever approves these things to keep an eye on the decimal levels that are going on. But as I've been listening to the comments and the back and forth among the council members, I think that what we're dealing with here is a problem of success. And Plainfield's not used to dealing with problems of success. So I would hope, if Councilman Matt is listening, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
The new administration in January, I would hope would set as part of its agenda, putting together a win-win outcome, which would be beneficial both to the merchants and to those who wanna have festivals. So we can view this year's experiences as a learning experience and get ourselves off on a, on a better foot next year.
Thank you.
And that's exactly what I meant when I say, let's just change the water, don't throw out the baby with the bad water.
I am Joanne Hollis, 535 West 3rd Street. I need to clear some things that is in the air. On Wednesday evening, I received about 4:10, I received a flyer, and it stated, Mayor Sharon Robinson-Briggs, Fun, 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 is hosting the All in the Family Fun Day. I said, "Saturday, the 24th?" I picked up the flyer that I could, you know, thought that it was a nice thing I said to y'all about having the Fun Day for the two councilwomen on August the 24th. I called Recreation Joanne Hollis, and I said, "Who am I speaking with, just like I'm speaking to you?" She said, "Abigail." I said, "I just need to ask the question." I said, "Now, I just received this on, this evening at 4:10, about a basketball Fun Day from the mayor." I said, "I was confused at once, but then I remembered she don't come to make the meetings, if either, 'cause that's what they used to say about Al McWilliams, may he rest in peace." But if he was living, he said, "Uh, they dogged me about not coming to meetings, so, so don't cheat." I said, "But, um, I listened to a 20-minute statement from Councilwoman Vera Graves last Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday." And she stated that we all need to get together and schedule these things together. Well, wouldn't that have been a wonderful thing, that the mayor and councilwomen, Council President Rivers and Councilwoman Graves did that, instead of having such a confusing event? But what bothers me is the most, I'm not a blog reader. But then I read, and it said it comes, that the city is paying for these funds. I, I would like to put in an O, because I need to know, how did they pay for these funds? Because I think this is just horrible. And I would like to know, how did they pay for them? Who approved it? Because it wasn't approved at the city, at Plainfield's council meeting. Then I received another call and stated, "Please pray, because it's gonna be some negativity." Let me say this to each and every one of you, I am a very sick woman. I am not out there to be negative about anything that is in good hands for the children. But unfortunately, I wonder, should I have been negative, when one of the employees go on Facebook and call me crazy? Because I supported Adrian Matt? Is that? I could have came down here and started screaming and hollering, but I'm, I'm human. But was it, was that in good faith? That they can get on and spread the word throughout, anybody that read Facebook? I'm not crazy. You know what I am? A very independent person. When I read in 2001, I became an independent person, always had, no one pulled this string to say, "Talk", this string to say, "Shut up", this string to say, "Walk", and this one to say, "Stop". And I want everyone to get things straight when it comes down to Joanne Hollis. And that is, I am very independent, and will always be independent. Because as long, I heard someone said, "I'mma go in there and say the blood of Jesus", but then y'all already been to get the blood of Jesus up in this place. And I'm not using religion, but I heard it, so this is what I'm gonna say. And you know, Councilwoman Rivers, I was laying up in the bed, and I was reading a, I was looking at a tape, 'cause someone taped y'all meetings. You stated that let's give administration a chance? Well then, did you see what administration did to you? Thank you.
Honorable Council President, I have to leave the meeting.
My name is Sandra Taylor Williams, and I just wanted to talk what this Hollis said. I don't understand, we have some issues here with council. Council members don't respect each other. So how can you respect us, the citizens? You have a rule here that I don't care for, I don't know if it's rule or law, that we can only speak five minutes. It's no answer, period, back and forth, where do we get our answers? When do we get our answers? You have on your paper, we're allotted an hour. Only 10 people can speak in an hour for five minutes. If 12 people come, they can't speak. What's the prob, you know, I don't understand that, it's the truth. If 12 people come, they can't speak, because the hour is up. And, and...
12 people, we speak at five minutes.
Oh, they can?
Yeah, that's what I was...
Six minutes.
Oh, it is? Okay. Well then, if 14 people came, I beg your pardon, they can't speak. So, you know, what, what, where do we get our answers from, you guys? We can only speak, there's no back and forth, where do we go to get our answers? I asked you that a couple of weeks ago. Where do we go to get our answers to our problems? We're the taxpayers, we pay your salary. You don't respect yourselves, you don't even respect us. And it's ridiculous. And how does the mayor, your mayor, 'cause she's not mine, the mayor, take our tax dollars and do with it what she wants? How does she lack one affair on top of another? It's ridiculous. Something needs to be done about this council. You guys need to revive yourself, or get yourselves together, or so forth. You argue amongst each other, and it's, it's ridiculous. It makes us look bad. That's all I have to say.
One more. I am Carol Bickett, 33 Hillside Avenue. And I am here about the clock. Not a clock, the clock. We have an historic clock in town. I bet you nobody in his room, except maybe me and three other people, know where it is. The deal was, at least 10 years ago, that the Union County Development Corps would purchase the clock, repair the clock, replace the clock in Park Madison Plaza. It's never been done. We were supposed to have use of the party garage. After hours holidays and weekends, that didn't happen. We were all supposed to be reimbursed for funds that we didn't get.
Tell them, girl.
Okay. Now I hear, we have worked on some kind of agreement that I have been rating everybody for years about. I sent them an agreement, all the freeholders, Hope, Polone, everybody. I have letters, I have pictures of the clock, everything. Now I hear, we've got 35 coming for a clock. A clock, not the clock. It has to be the historic clock that is purchased, repaired, and replaced. I have a historical preservation commission in this town that goes, "I want finials on the, on your fence. You can't use vinyl windows, you have to use wooden ones. You have to put mahogany stacks. You can't use regular wood. You better buy this clock. You better fix the clock, I got somebody getting a fee, how much it's gonna cost to restore it, and you better replace it. This town has a lot of history, and if we let this go, we are just falling deeper and sin. I want the clock purchased, repaired, and replaced. And that's the way it is tonight. So if anybody's got any problems with it, they better come and see me. Do you know where the clock is?
No, I don't.
All right. Come see me, or I'll show you.
If I may, if I may address the council. My name is Leonard Guire. I'm the owner of the 118 Park Avenue property where the clock is. Sorry, bro, sorry, that's all right. Uh, excuse for the lateness. We actually petitioned to the city a few years back regarding the repairment of that clock. What we were told was, half of the money had to be paid out of pocket, other half, the city would cover. Now, this, that landmark has been there since Park Jewellers, we're talking about early 1900s. And that's a big landmark for the history of Plainfield. You know, I, when I, when my brother actually spoke to, and petitioned for the repairment of that landmark, we were told, just create up this, you have to pay half. Even though it's not connected to our building, it's not, it's part of, it's not actually our property, it's on city's property. We own the rest of the property, the entire building. So I guess my only two cents that I could really add to this would be, I have no problem working with the council and trying to come up to with an agreement or some kind where we can both work together in getting that landmark for the city of Plainfield. or some kind where we can both work together in getting that landmark for the city of Plainfield, for the people. So, I just wanted to add to what you said. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, we need to talk.
Why, what's that?
Just a clarification. As part of the UCIA settlement agreement, $35,000, the UCIA has put forward $35,000 for the refurbishment of the clock. Uh, they're hoping it's not a matching fund situation. If the cost is in excess, certainly the council would have to approve those funds. But as it stands now, would you have $35,000 allocated for the refurbishment of the clock?
Of that clock.
Of that one?
Not a clock. That clock.
You specify that clock.
You're talking about the clock.
The clock.
One second, no back and forth.
I'll be right in for the meeting.
What's your question?
I was gonna ask it for you.
I'm Dottie, we can help, 14 Ray. One of the things that has always bothered me about governments in Plainfield is the internal inconsistency. And in this particular instance, although frankly, I am not thrilled by two or three-day festivals that the music lasts half the night and all the rest of that. I have to, I have to say, I do believe Mr. Garcia is being treated unfairly. And that troubles me a great deal. Not that I love the idea, yeah, but I'm troubled by the lack of consistency. That's point one. Point two, I was as surprised as Ms. Hollis would to see those flyers announcing city-sponsored events on August 24th, when I would have hoped that everybody who could walk would go to Washington. And certainly, the mayor of Plainfield would go to Washington, as she said that she was going to. Third, I, I have to say that I miss Ray Blanca. I really do. After he was first elected council president, he and I went to lunch and we talked a great deal about some of the things that needed to be done in the city. And one of the things we absolutely agreed on was that the council and the corporation council needed to sit down and review every ordinance on the books because there is so much inconsistency in there. And a lot, I'm sure, are totally outdated. I'm sure there's an ordinance prohibiting the keeping of elephants as pets, for example, uh, which might not be a bad idea. I mean, after all, this is a donkey town, but, ooh, I didn't mean to do that. But a lot of them, I'm sure, are outdated. And a lot of them, I'm sure, are inconsistent with each other. And this is a serious problem when you folks sit down and try, and I, I put this on the corporation council too, when you start trying to apply the guidelines and the ordinances, well, it really depends on which ordinance you're reading and da, 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 da. That's, that's no way to run a city. I don't care who the mayor is, that is simply no way to run a city. And that's no way to run a city council or anything else. It's no wonder that things don't get done. It's no wonder that things get botched up. Because someplace out there, you know, nobody's paying attention. I have to say, this, this has troubled me for a long, long time. This is not the first mayor and council that I've had this kind of problem with. And this is my problem. I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm out of range, I think, of the decibels. There are lots of big spaces in this town that are not necessarily right next to residential housing and would not necessarily take business away from downtown areas. There's a lot of them. It's not just those two parking lots. But I don't want to see the council do anything that smacks of favoritism. And that's what I am afraid I have heard this evening. So, I would urge you to reconvene into a business session and move to reconsider the ordinance, the resolution, whatever it is, that deprives Mr. Garcia of the same provisions that you allowed for this other festival. I think discrimination is wrong, no matter where it comes from and who it hits. And, you know, my great husband and I devoted our lives to civil rights and civil liberties. And I believe very strongly that, that, you know, how can we complain about the attempts to restrict voter access in North Carolina when essentially we're applying the same set of laws, different in two similar cases right here? Now, listeners, I don't, I don't have a problem with turning somebody down for a festival if, gonna run the clock, I mean, if, thank you, thank you. May I?
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
If you're gonna have a 45-day threshold for applying for these things, enforce it consistently. If you're gonna have a noise level limitation for these things, enforce it consistently, consistently. Now, it has been said by consistency. Consistency is the hobgoblin of small minds, right? So, we ought to define with that. But it is, I believe, incumbent upon you to interpret the laws of the city of Plainfield in an honest, equitable, fair, and non-discriminatory way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oscar Riva, 1338 Martine Avenue. In addition to the other comments that I have, I want to start out with the comments Ms. Gunkoff just made in terms of Mr. Garcia being treated unfairly, which is completely skewed considering that last week, or when the council voted, they voted against, it failed for him to have his presentation. A special meeting was called. He's now getting his presentation. His fees were waived for two days. I'm not sure that's really unfair. Just so that everybody knows, looks can be deceiving. I'm a first-generation American. My parents immigrated here from Cuba in 1968. So, I know about heritage and attending these festivals and so on and so forth. I grew up in Newark and just outside of Newark. And I was doing a little, looking up on usually, how these festivals are usually held. And usually, it's held by an organization. It's not held by a single business owner. And I rarely disagree with Mr. Matt or Councilman Matt. That may, or that may not be a good thing. But the bottom line is that he ran on a platform, in his particular situation, he ran on a platform of code enforcement and ordinances and going by the book. And right now, this evening, he chooses to say that, doesn't matter now, let's think about it next time. Well, unfortunately, next time, you know, may be too late. Or why not do it now? The ordinances, the regulations are on the books. So, if, as somebody else said before, if we're not going to follow our own rules, then what's the point of making these ordinances and rules? And it's unfair to all the other folks who have to go by the book. Competition, as Councilwoman Williams said before, competition would be that there's a multitude of other folks participating in this festival. That's not the case here. It's one business owner and I have nothing, I don't know Mr. Garcia, I don't know him. I salute him for his entrepreneurship. But it's unfair for the city to allow one business owner to shut out everyone else. That's not fair. Because even if it's 10% less on your, on your revenues for the day and somebody else might be picking up some extra bucks for the day, that's great. But these folks are trying to operate a business. And if we're trying to attract businesses into the downtown area, you can't just shut people out because one folk, one, one person is trying to, you know, they, they don't run this as a not-for-profit. This is a for-profit, three days of profit. Mr. Garcia said he has 10,000 people come. I did some math this afternoon, just based on 2,500 people in terms of vendor fees and all sorts of other fees that are charged in sales and so on and so forth. It's an easy 75, $80,000. Not begrudging Mr. Garcia anything. However, it's unfair to those other small, small business owners who are just making a few hundred bucks a day, if that, to be completely shut out. One day, not a problem. Two days, okay. Three days, six days in one summer is a lot. And especially when the city is not getting its fair share. I'll repeat what I said before. It's a cash-based business. Back and forth, all around. Nothing wrong with that. The only thing wrong with that is that the city, the county, and the state is not getting their fair share. So, it's a lot of money into one person's pocket. And that money is not being spread around. So, from what I've heard at other council meetings and all the folks that are sitting here at this table who have spoken before about sharing the wealth and extending to other people, that's not really what's happening here. I think it might be a very good thing for folks to come into Plainfield. Cultural festivals are great. They're held out throughout the entire state. But as other folks have said, there are more open and separate places to have them than in, right, right in downtown. I live about a mile, a little over a mile away, and I hear it. It's not a big deal. Honestly, it's not a big deal. But the fact that Mr. Garcia decided to come up and feel that he's being mistreated or discriminated, for lack of better words, is completely, completely skewed and unfair as a statement. Thank you. Obvious separation.
Any more comments?
I just have a question.
Any more comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close, per just below? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
Yeah, I just have a question for our corporation council. Again, going back to this resolution, how, you know, it's not going to, I'm looking again at number two, approval from surrounding retail merchants. This resolution assumes that the event has received approval and I've seen no evidence of it having approval. So, from the surrounding retail merchants, so the way I see it, the, the event is not in compliance. So, what happens now if it's not in compliance?
I recognize how the council believes, if you believe it's not in compliance. But as your council, the, the council has spoken, in essence, by virtue of a vote, to adopt the resolution. I interpret that to mean that the council believes that those approvals do exist, that there's a vote.
But I'm saying, if we have not seen it, how can we, how can it be approved if we have not seen any approvals?
I believe that it's up to every council member to weigh that when making their vote.
I haven't seen anything. I don't know if anybody else has seen anything. Did anyone else receive anything? I've received nothing.
But you already made your vote, right? Everybody made their vote. Every individual person gave their vote.
No, my, my question is a legal question to corporation council about the resolution and about validity of it.
I have really nothing further to add, Ms. Williams.
Okay.
I think we have to, we have to look forward and anticipate future events and look at our ordinances. And actually, take the advice that we got from the Sid and other people here tonight about where these events should be located, how often they should be, when they should end. This is all up for discussion. We got a lot of good input. We should use it.
Right, right. And we should all take that into consideration, all the merchants that's come out. The state representative, we would take all that into consideration when reviewing our ordinance for, you know, previous events that are coming up. We do take you guys, as I stated, I was not here last week when everyone came to the mic and, you know, but I did get the information. And you guys might be, one second, you guys might be legitimate that's here. The seven of you guys that are here. But there were, and I can give you a copy of what I got. There were several businesses on there that was no longer in existence, so.
Um, we have a business owner, like I told you, she wants to speak. She just don't speak English and, I guess, um...
I'll, I'll, you know, let her speak. I'm sorry, go ahead.
She wants to speak, but I guess she don't speak English, but she wants me to translate.
Next time.
Oh, next time. Okay, cool.
Real quick, let me just ask her a question, real quick. You did hear when I said, was there any more comments?
Oh, that's what it is. She, she just told me right now and I guess she don't speak English. She wanted me to translate.
Because I usually don't allow back and forth, but I just wanted for the record, because we are on TV. You did hear when I asked, was there any more public comments?
Usted no entendio cuando ya dijo que se querían hablar. She just told me now. She don't understand. She didn't understood you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take that into consideration. That's something maybe Councilman Matt should take a look at because with our growing Latino population, maybe we do need somebody to translate with our meaning so that maybe they can understand what's going on. We'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
I, I just want to say there was a comment made in reference to the council doing infighting and not respecting each other. I beg to differ. I've been on the council for eight months and we do respect each other. We do get along. These are the most loving people that I know. No, we really get, we, we really truly get along and we really respect each other. And, you know, they, being a new kid on the block, if I'm not clear on a certain issue, I will call any council member and they will give me good counsel and I appreciate it. So, I just wanted to let the public know that we do respect each other and I see really no infighting. We respectfully disagree at times, but we do have a mutual respect for each other.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that.
Any more comments? With that being said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Soon.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.